Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June 3 regular meeting of the Zion City Council. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Brereton?
Aye.
Commissioner Stackhouse?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnney?
Aye.
Item number three is the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Brimmer, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, sir.
All right. Commissioner McDowell, you're going to lead us in prayers.
I will, Mr. Mayor. Our pastor that was going to come is not able to make it, so I'd be happy to, all right, lead in prayers. So let's pray. Father, we want to thank you for your watchful care for us every day of our lives. Thank you for giving us places to stay, enough to eat, for keeping us healthy. Thank you that we could be out here tonight to observe what is happening in our city. And we want to thank you for the many blessings that we receive by living here in Zion. We ask, Lord, for your continued protection and that you would allow us to prosper. And we want to thank you for our mayor, who is going to be celebrating his birthday in just a few days. Thank you for his leadership in this city, and we ask you continue to give him many more days. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Commissioner. Item number four, agenda changes. Are there any agenda changes by any of the commissioners?
I would like to remove item 9A.
Is there a particular reason?
We're going to table this to the first meeting in July, so when Ms. Cooper is here, and we need to evaluate some of the new information that we've received.
Okay.
All second.
There's a motion, motion by Frierson to table to July?
Correct. She's not available for the next meeting in June, so July.
Okay. So I'm sorry, you're waiting for the applicant to be present at the meeting?
That's why we're not tabling for the next meeting, so we're moving one more meeting out.
Okay. And we have a sec.
Mr. Chair, I think there's just some confusion. I am sorry, and it's nice to see everyone again. So the motion is to table this matter to July the 9th. Is that correct?
Correct.
And Commissioner, is that, that was your second request?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. I come back, and now all I want to do is talk about July the 9th.
July the 9th is a Wednesday.
Oh, I'm sorry.
July 1st is the next city council meeting.
Next city meeting on that day?
When are we going to meet that day?
So I would say the next July meeting. I'm not, I wasn't sure if we were going to meet.
Okay.
July 1st.
July 1, okay. It's July 1, I'm sorry.
Yes. Okay. And we have a first and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Brereton?
Aye.
Commissioner Stackhouse?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnney?
Aye. Motion carries five zip to table this discussion of item 9A until the next city council meeting on July 1st. Item number five, we have a special presentation, officer recognition.
Moved to next meeting.
That has been moved to the next meeting. So we go to item number six, which is citizen comments. Mary Lou Hildebrandt.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. The month of May was a busy one for your as of volunteers. You gave 236 and a half hours of service for a value to the city of $6,394. You've bought out equipment for numerous block parties assisting with the traffic accident at night from Lorley, traffic and safety for the Llama's Run, LULSO Walk for Life for the Family Resource Center. We helped with traffic carting and lot security at ZBTHS graduation, during which we pulled two units to assist with an accident at night in Green Bay. We performed the monthly siren test in other monthly meetings, as well as performing duty tasks to maintain the center and our equipment. Members participated in an indemnification escort, directed traffic flow at the food pantry at ZB East, as well as traffic and street closure for the Elite Straders Drill or Die Parade, which included teams from Minnesota, Indiana, Nebraska, as well as local teams. I encourage people to come and watch next year. These kids train hard, and they deserve recognition for their efforts and their pleasure to watch. Volunteers are a positive influence in our community. If you are interested in our community and wish to volunteer, please fill out an application on the city website or can contact the fire department for information. Thank you for your continued support.
All right. Thank you, Mary Lou. We have Diane Cooper. Is Diane Cooper here?
Yes.
Okay. Did you want to make some citizen comments tonight? No? Okay. Tiana McDay is here. Since you're new here for citizens comments, we have a three-minute limit for citizens comments. Probably, we might not make a response to your comments at the time during the meeting, but probably during our departmental commentary, if there's an issue that our department, one of our department hats can handle, we will address it at that time. Okay? Thank you.
Yeah, good evening. I'm Tiana McDay. I'm here on behalf of my family to raise the concern about safety on our block, specifically regarding 2406 Doran Avenue. On Sunday night, death shots were fired on our street. Our car purchased just a month ago was hit, with its shattered and damage. Fortunately, no one was hurt, but this wasn't the first time. There have been at least two other shootings tied to this house, one involving an injury. All were reported to the police. My family has spoken with police repeatedly. We've had several incidents, including one caused by a splatter in our yard and an unreached dog that saved multiple people, including our mail carrier, which stopped mail from arriving at our house for two weeks. My parents have owned our home for 31 years. I grew up there and went to West Elementary School right across the street. Moving isn't an option. This is our home. This situation has caused emotional and financial stress on our family. We've already lost a loved one to gun violence, and we're afraid of losing another. And our neighbors in our block who are concerned, we have kids on our block, pets, and we have a school nearby of our own. And while these incidents have happened at night, we're just worried that we'll have to leave. So we're asking the city of Zion to be serious with me. In the past, we have responded to this, which is just having the neighbors vacation, but they come back eventually. So we're trying to look for something more permanent. And we just wish for our block to be ready to move where someone else can be.
All right. Thank you very much, and our apologies for that happening in your neighborhood, and I'm sure our police chief is here, will address that during our city council meeting. And thank you for the address as well, so that we can talk to the landlords and see what's happening there. Thank you. Kathy Champagne?
Good evening. I'm here to address your website, but first I want to mention my property taxes. They increased by $1,050. It's a 16.5% increase. My assessment went up 20%. I think there's a direct correlation. I don't think that any of the taxing bodies' levies caused this increase. It was my assessment. Now about your website, it's updated. I don't mean appearance, I mean the content. For example, some of the most recent documents on the Citizens Information Center are appropriation notices. Most recent is 2023. City council, you're missing minutes for March, April, May. Planning and zoning, the most recent minutes are 2023. Delivery control commission has no minutes. TIP for review, the most recent is January of 2022. Special events commission, no minutes. Zion Fire and Rescue, no minutes. Police Action Fund, no minutes. Financial reports, the budgets are up to date on the financial page, but 2024 and 2025 are missing from the Citizens Information Center. Salary and benefits, the most recent is 2013. The taxes and fees for water and sewage are updated. Quality, water quality report, most recent is 2023. And according to the state database by Susan Andos, TIP and audit reports have not been submitted in the last three years. The new resident packet needs to be updated. Commissioner Stackhouse needs to be added, and waste management is now collecting garbage not advanced disposal. I believe that's correct. Your website is not searchable at all, and it should be. And it's a shame, because your minutes aren't excellent. They really aren't. So what are you paying for? Your website is a window to how you function, yet reflects your municipal culture. I'm going to talk about webmaster duties. Webmasters should back up the website, optimize site security, configure certain application controls, handle website design, do programming, update information, report website analytics. How many visitors do you count? What are they interested in? You should be telling, he or she should be telling what the trends are. Recommend updates. Check the site for vulnerabilities. At the core, this is a communications problem. Being a webmaster is not a master job. He or she should be advising you what you need, including missing documents. And I'm sorry to say this, but there's no transparency. I've been attending city council meetings for years, and I do not believe that any of you are opposed to transparency. What the opposite, I think you all want it. I suspect that over the years, due to employee transition and the problems faced during COVID, some of these items fell into cracks. Perhaps this would be a good time to identify what is missing, what belongs to, who is overloaded, and who may be able to pick up some of these extra tests. Maybe you, or police, you might consider adding some. But also consider an applicative policy. You were turned on yet, and I think it would be good to tell the community what you're doing and why. And please subscribe to the podcast. It's a great way to get information out. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number seven is consent agenda.
We welcome next, a regular meeting held on May 20, 2025. That's them now.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Motion by Frierson, second by Stackhouse. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Brereton?
Aye.
Commissioner Stackhouse?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnney?
Abstain.
Bills, functions 149222 through 149302, and on Huntington National Bank, total $473,304.90.
Is there a motion to approve the bills?
All move to approve the bills.
Motion by Fisher?
Second.
Second by Stackhouse. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Brereton?
Aye.
Commissioner Stackhouse?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnney?
Aye. Motion carries five zip. Item number eight, consider passing ordinance as follows. Authorizing and approving a towing service agreement with Rogers Towing Service on behalf of the City of Zion, per Chief Bart.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners. I have reviewed the current tow contract, last amended and signed back in June of 2022. I respectfully request approval of the attached updated tow contract for the City of Zion contract for towing services as presented.
Is there a motion to approve the towing services agreement with Rogers Towing Service?
I'll make a motion that we approve the towing contract as presented.
Motion by McDowell. Second by Fisher. Questions or comments? Saying none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Brereton?
Aye.
Commissioner Stackhouse?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnney?
Aye. Motion carries four to one. Item 8B, authorizing a memorandum of understanding between Zion Professional Firefighters Association, IAFF Local 1999, and the City of Zion, per Chief Street.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm requesting approval of the attached memorandum of understanding, also known as MOU, for firefighters local 1999. By way of brief background, one section of the recent collective bargaining agreement missed one small detail regarding firefighter shift changes in hours worked. This is a simple agreement with the firefighters' union that specifies that a firefighter does not have the same amount of time off between shifts during a deployment change. Typically, it happens at fiscal year change, and sometimes due to a promotion or something like that. That member will work one less debit shift later in the same fiscal year. I know there's a lot of terminology here that's maybe a little bit confusing, but I'd be happy to discuss if anybody needs any information. Legal has reviewed the MOU and does approve.
All right. Is there a motion to authorize that memorandum of understanding between Zion Professional Firefighters Association? Make that motion? Motion by McDowell?
Second.
Second by Fisher. Questions or comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Brereton?
Aye.
Commissioner Stackhouse?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnney?
Aye. Motion carries five zip. Item number 8C, authorizing and approving an indemnification agreement for recapture between Orion Asset Management LLC and the City of Zion, per City Attorney, Jimmy Visser.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Tonight, we seek approval of an ordinance authorizing and approving an indemnification agreement for recapture between Orion Asset Management LLC and the City of Zion, Illinois. There is an attenuated recapture agreement with two bankrupt entities that, because they are bankrupt and dissolved entities, to the best of all of our information, cannot be located to remove the recapture obligations that are outstanding as recorded against the Trumpet Park property for the Plano-Orion deal that we are doing. As part of our negotiations with them, they wanted clean title, which is normal for commercial deals such as this. Because of the nature of the complicated nature of the fact that these are dissolved, these are older entities, an older agreement, and these are entities of questionable solvability, the negotiated stance to get us through to the closing was to have the city enter into an indemnification agreement that if there was recapture obligations that would be paid through, which is subject to increment, we could pay that through TIP. And then stay true to the deal, where we would donate the land to them, which is what we negotiated with and approved in the agreement. So we do recommend approval of this. If it does come through, we may have to pay. But that was the nature of the deal. That has not offset the numerous benefits, including the potential purchase of water for all the IV bags that go out there. So we do wholeheartedly recommend this, and look forward to closing on this if this is approved by this body on Friday, May, June, the 6th, at noon.
All right. Is there a motion to authorize and approve the agreement for recapture between Orion Assets Management LLC?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Fisher and second by Stackhouse. Questions or comments?
What is the potential, what's our exposure on this if this recapture gets triggered?
So that's based on the frontage that goes along the 21 acres. We're probably looking at, we're still waiting for the final length there, but somewhere between 900,000 and 1.1 million. And again, that's for all the infrastructure that was put in, the streets, the water mains, the curbs, and all that stuff on Trumpet Drive and for the development of that. So it gets, that cost gets allocated to any property along there that benefits from that. But as Attorney Visser said, that company is no longer in existence. So, but we have to go through the process, just, and make you aware that there's a possibility that there may be a claim. I have emails from prior, that they wrote off, that the prior owners wrote off this recapture as unrecoverable due to the timing with North Shore Water, Mission District, all that. But we wanted to make sure that we didn't make that call without knowledge of console, that there's that potential there, but it still makes the deal. The risk is relatively minimal, but even as Attorney Visser said, even if it went through, it's beneficial for, for the city uncovered by TIP.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any additional questions? All right. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Brereton?
Aye.
Commissioner Stackhouse?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnney?
Aye. Motion carries five zip. Item number 9A, given that 9A was stricken and moved up for our next agenda item, is to consider appointment of our new Public Works Director by Mayor McKinnney, and our new public director of Public Works is in the House tonight, Victor Ransom, who's been with the city for 33 years, starting in, was it July of 1982?
No. It was May of 1992.
Oh.
May 92. Started out as summer, then May 92, and went full-time April 94.
I misunderstood you. I thought it was 92. That's my, I guess, my ZB math there. For 33 years with the City of Zion, moving now into a very prominent role with us, I'm sure this is not going to have any, any issues passing, given the history you have with the city. A Zion resident, graduated of Zion Bitten High School, family members have been involved with the city for many years, and it's really great. We're going to miss Ray Roberts, our former Director of Public Works. But again, when I, when I look at the people around the room, people that have graduated from Zion Bitten High School, Victor Ransom, Rich Iyansen, Justice Street, or Fire Chief, our police chief, Eric Barton, our, our city administrator, David Nabel, getting all these names, Mike McDowell, our Commissioner, Beverly Stackhouse, all graduates of Zion. And I'll talk a little bit more about that, what that means, based on a conversation I had with a group that I spoke with this morning. But without further ado, is there a motion to appoint our new Public Works Director, Mr. Victor Ransom?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Stackhouse, second by Frierson. Before we, let's, you have any words you'd like to say, or you're going to reserve those for departmental commentary?
Yeah, reserve.
All right. So Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Brereton?
Aye.
Commissioner Stackhouse?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnney?
Aye. Motion carries five zip, and welcome to your new position, same department, and we look forward to working with you and supporting your efforts to continue what you've been doing for the last 33 years.
Thank you very much.
And don't take backs, you're stuck now. Item number 10 is departmental commentary. Director Iyansen?
Thank you, Your Honor. We have got to begin with annual city cleanup, the first area in August, August 2, community 12, who will be collecting both tires and electronics. It's been very successful in the past year, so I encourage everybody to utilize it and come on out, and throw it in your garage and your basement.
And that's on the corner of 28th and Gallately, a vacant property that was taken down many years ago, the old Munder Building. And we've had a huge turnout on all those events since we implemented that. How many years ago is that? Almost, almost 10 years ago?
Yes, 10.
10 years. And we get, all Zion residents have to do is show their Zion driver's license, and they can drop their items off at 28th and Gallately on August 2, between 8 and noon. Thank you for organizing that, again, with the, our new waste company and with our residents. Director Ransom?
We have begun our remodel lead and copper sampling program. In 2021 through 2024, we inventory every service line at the City of Zion, and out of the roughly 7,100, we have found 42 lead or galvanized services. Per EPA, we are mandatorily required to take 60 samples per our population. The 41 that are lead and copper are definitely, and then there were 30 that were left over from the last program, so we're using 19 of those to take to take the 60. All of them are EPA registered sites, and all of them are mandatory as of now. And I also want to comment on the water quality report on the website from the citizens comments. Water quality report is always a reporting year behind, they're not due, so this, reporting year 23 is the newest one. Reporting year 24, which is due July 1 of 2025, will be up July 1 of 2025, and then you'll have reporting year 24. So it always runs one year behind. And that is another thing that's mandated by Illinois EPA. And they do monitor our website to make sure the most current is up. That's all I have for the day.
All right. Thank you, Director Ransom. Chief Street?
Good evening again. A couple of quick things. Some of you may have noticed the emergency sirens activated a little bit longer this morning for the monthly test. That was because we ended up putting it off twice. The siren on top of your city, on top of City Hall actually didn't alert, so we're going to try to get to the bottom of that over the next month. So we ran it twice just to see if it was, for whatever reason, didn't go the first time, but since it didn't activate the second time. And most of the other ones did, they heard it for a cycle of two tests. So we'll look into that. It's kind of been an ongoing saga over the last couple of years. One of the recommendations very well may be that we end up having to replace this one and/or more. We replaced the one with new technology out on Green Bay Road, and it's been pretty flawless since it's been replaced. The problem with that is there are about $20,000 each to replace, so that'll have to be a planned capital or something for a subsequent budget year. But we'll look into that, and that's why you may, if you're, depending on where you were in the city today, you might have heard the sirens go off a little bit longer than usual, and that's why. The only other thing I'll add is I've kind of been teasing it for a while over the last couple of meetings, but we are starting to get ready for the season down on our lake. Just a couple of things that we are doing a little bit differently this year is we're training some what we call rescue swimmers. It's not a full-fledged scuba dive program, but it allows for a rescuer to get down there and in the water and help somebody who's in distress just a little bit quicker than calling a full dive team, putting on all the dive equipment, scuba tank, all that stuff. So we will have some rescue swimmers available for our lakefront this year, and we're also working on a partnership with our neighbors to the north and south, Winter Harbor and Beach Park Fire Departments, to potentially have a small crew down there on busy weekend days this summer. And we're potentially going to split some personal watercraft devices to also make that sprint out to somebody in distress just a little bit quicker than activating a full-fledged boat and dive crew. So it's just a little bit of a taste of how we're going to be ready for, and hopefully we don't have to activate these teams on the lakefront, but if the trends of the last few seasons continue, we will have some activity down there this season, and we want to be ready for it. And if any of you have any other questions or concerns about that type of stuff, I'm always all ears, and y'all know how to get ahold of me.
All right. Thank you, Chief Street. Chief Bart?
Good evening again. Thank you. We have a lot of volunteers for the watercraft. It sounds fun. I just wanted to remind folks that we have several cooling centers. Today's temperature hit 86 degrees, as my vehicle said. And I just want to remember there's some cooling centers within our city, the police department, one of them, the libraries, another, the city hall is one for certain hours. But city, the police department, within the city, the police department, like, 24 hours a day, if you need to come in, we can get you cooled off and set up. We'll have an officer, dedicated officer, stop in and stay with you during that time if needed. So just remind folks of that. And then also, that said, check on your neighbors, especially on these hot days. Not everybody has air conditioning. So make sure you just touch base with your neighbors, see how they're doing, especially on the other. Just a reminder to keep a look at our Facebook, we've been trying to be a little bit more diligent about certain posts and certain timelines, and hoping that we're getting some good, some good reach on that. Our Facebook page has been intentional about how we're trying to outlay some information there and just keep some folks informed. That's all I've got. Looking forward to coming events here soon, these thousand days and all the things.
All right. Chief Barton, at the end of the meeting, could you?
I will talk for this.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Thank you very much for that, Chief, and thanks for that update. Director Conway?
I don't have anything, except happy birthday.
Thank you. Thank you. Administrator Nate?
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. I have, I'll take three things since you passed on your orders and tidbits. I have, I'll take three things since you passed on your orders and tidbits. First is, I want to request that Champagne to send me the list of the information that they, that's not on the website, but Clerk Spooner has been working diligently with our web map, so we're actually like a hair away from a redesigned website. So part of that is, we know a lot of these documents were not updated fully on the site, but rather than go through, that's why I'm on that list, because rather than spend time going through that, we've been just trying to get the new site that's kind of running in the background but not live yet, up and current, and rather than duplicate effort on a item that's going to be expiring, we wanted to clean up the new one because it wasn't user-friendly, searchable, all those things. So it's a much-needed update that we've been working on behind the scenes, so we'll, I want to make sure those items are addressed, but that is hopefully coming out. She'll be nice and say it's not on me, but some of the items delaying that are on me, that she's waiting for some logos and things, so I appreciate that. We also got word today, actually, that included in the state's budget, our relationships with our legislators is paying off and continuing going. There was five hundred thousand dollars from Senator Allen and another five hundred thousand from Representative Mason that through their efforts and lobbying efforts, was included in the budget for operational grants and funds for the City of Zion. Additionally, we received word that another funding opportunity is going to be coming out for eight hundred thousand dollars for, towards the construction of a new fire station. It was announced a couple of years ago, but it takes time to go through the process, and after following up on that, we received confirmation from DCEO on that today. So in one day, we got word of one point eight million dollars of grant funding through the, through the efforts of our meetings and relationships, and so I appreciate all the council members continuing those relationships with our legislators, they do pay off. And the final item is in relation to the tax item. I, I don't know how much your percentage went up on values, if it's a case-by-case basis, if yours went up by more than the average. A lot of property values went up, but the tax rate goes down to offset that on a, if everyone's property values went up ten percent, the tax rate goes down ten percent, and your taxes would be the same unless taxing bodies ask for more in their extensions or less in their abatements. Now, that doesn't mean that what you said isn't true, because yours might have gone, your value might have gone up twenty percent, whereas the tax rates went down ten, so that contributes to it, but it's a very complic, taxes are a very complicated issue, and there's a lot of pieces in the formula. So take a look at the bottom left of your tax bill, because I know there's been a lot of discussion about property taxes lately, and we did do a seminar on that for the public, but at the bottom left of your tax bill, it shows how much, the breakdown by taxing entity of what went up or what went down, but also look at the value that yours went up. I think our rate, I was looking it up, if you saw me on the phone, I was trying not to be rude, but our, the collective tax rate for the Zion elementary district is twelve point six eight nine this year, which is a nine percent decrease from last year, and that's even factoring in increases in levies and such. So look at your percent increase, like I said, hers went up twenty percent, that's higher than the average, which would contribute to some of that, but the amount that gets paid is due to increases in levies or reductions of abatements. I mean, we've taken advantage of that in the past, too, costs go up, but it's not just a value item, there's a lot of pieces to it. So there's links out there on our Facebook, we'll try and get them on the website, too, to some of the dollars and cents, seminars, and also some of the other town halls that we've done, and I think the high school is actually doing one, twenty-sixth?
I think so.
Okay. To help understanding your tax bills. So take advantage of that, to learn all the pieces that go into things, so that everyone's informed on how your bills are, are, how your tax dollars are being spent, where they're going. I know you trust us to make those decisions and understand it so you don't have to, but we want to make sure that you do, so if there's ever any questions, feel free to reach out, and I'll show up and answer for hours on taxes.
Now, would you, just one thing, too, in, in that regard, I want to say with a couple of weeks ago, we put together with something, a Zoom call for our residents to be on to talk about taxes and Zija money, and I think there were ten people that showed up on that call.
Six of them were the panelists.
And so one of the things that really is crucial for our residents, and it's one of the reasons we are redesigning our website, is trying to get the information out that's available to our residents so that they can get involved with knowing about these things. And I think, since I've been on the City Council, one of the things that I've probably been most surprised about is people not understanding what the responsibility of city government is, and we have tried really hard over the last six to ten years by having community-form meetings during quarterlies at different points to talk to our residents, so they can ask us questions that they can get answered in a transparent way in front of a group of people, and I'm sure we need, we're overdue for one of those that we set up with all of our taxing bodies, but we appreciate your comments on the website. We have been working on that, we've been working with a communication firm, because we understand that's one of the things that we said years ago when I became mayor, said there's two things that I wish we could do. One would be hire a grant writer, but some of our police officers have taken on the extra responsibility and been able to write grants that have helped the city tremendously, and to hire a communications firm, not only to help us get our message out, but also to, more importantly, to turn the tables on the perception of the City of Zion, because there's an outside perception of our city that's inaccurate. We might be a blue-collar community, but we have good, hard-working people here that aren't the bad people that are portrayed from people from the outside. So that, that's something that finally, we have the resources to be able to do, and we're working on that. So thank you for your comments and observations on that, Kathy. Commissioner McNabb?
Yeah. Mayor, it seems that throughout our lives, there are certain events that we should mark and celebrate, and certainly when somebody turns fifty years old, we should recognize that and, and mark it and celebrate it. I have no idea what to do when somebody turns seventy, but certainly fifty definitely should be celebrated.
I, I can tell you, I can answer that. There's a, a song, if anyone has ever heard of the group called Rare Earth, and they had a song called "Celebrate," and some of the lyrics were, "I just want to celebrate another day of living." So. There you go, Mayor. Having the privilege of turning seventy in a couple of days, or actually, I'm turning fif, fiftieth? Fifty a couple of times, yeah. Forty-second, twentieth time. So, yeah. I have some. Commissioner Stackhouse has organized a little, little treat for all of us, so if you want to stay for a few minutes after the council meeting, we'll bring that out. And I, and I think, Clerk Spooner, you have a card from all of us. Oh, it's up there? Yeah. Where is it at? It's, it's right here. Well, you should open it up and take a look at it. I asked her when she first put the envelope up here, is there money in here? But I'm sure, I'm sure it's a gag gift.
No, at fifty, definitely, but seventy.
Uh, dang, I love this one. It says, "Speak softly and carry a big stick, unless you can ride a dinosaur, then do that instead." So I've ridden my share of dinosaurs. Thank you. Happy birthday. Thank you very much. Mr. Fryerson?
I'll echo that saying. Congratulations on the twentieth anniversary of your fiftieth birthday. Welcome to Director Ransom. And then I just wanted to say thank you, Chief Street, for the proactiveness and the collaboration with the other departments in trying to get ahead of activity out on the waterfront this year. I know we talked about that last meeting. And then thank you to the Administrator and Cheryl for working on the website. I'll echo what the mayor was saying in terms of folks needing to get that information. I know sometimes folks don't always show up for the events that we have, but the more that we can make it accessible and findable and searchable, then folks can go and get it in the time that they need it. It's not always the right time that they can digest it when, you know, a dollars and cents may be going on, but the more that we can make that available, I think it helps to inform the citizens, and that's of great value, so thank you for the hard work.
All right. Commissioner Stackhouse?
I also want to echo to thank Chief Street for the prevention that you're doing down on Lake Mission, because a former student of mine lost her life down there last year, and that was one of the big questions about why wasn't anybody down there with the families? It was devastating, so I want to thank you for what you're doing to put things in place to help our city, and, and just, and the people that just go down there and visit, it's a beautiful place down there to visit and have fun with families, so I want to thank you. I echo what Commissioner Fryerson said, and all of us are just thankful for the work that all of you do here for our city, and listening to your reports. I'm thankful for Mr. Ransom as well, joining the leadership team in our city, and I'm just looking forward to working with all of you, hard-working people for the City of Zion, that's going to help us move forward and do great things. People are going to want to come into our city, so I want to thank you all, and thank you visitors for coming, and I hope you can stick around and have a treat, help celebrate our mayor. You know, we have birthdays once a year, right? We got to celebrate.
I'm celebrating this one all year. Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to welcome Director Ransom to your new post, so now, now I'll, I'll bug you instead of Director Roberts, so, you know, get ready, get ready for that. Anyway, yeah, happy birthday. Okay. I think, I don't think, I don't think we have enough balloons. Do we have enough balloons?
As long as I don't have to blow those, that many candles, I'll be fine. Else we'll be calling search and rescue and EMS.
But, yeah, we're, we've gotten past the, I think, the last meeting, I mentioned that, you know, we have Memorial Day coming up, so we're past Memorial Day, we're into the summer season, and, you know, everybody, you know, take care of each other, and we hope to see you back here at the next meeting.
All right. My comments, I'll try to be brief, but there are certainly some things that I, I want to cover. First of all, we talked about the water rescue efforts. Last year, I think we had four deaths, four or five deaths at Illinois Beach State Park, and one of our members of our Fire Department, who was also the chief in Winter Harbor, talked about us collaborating as a community to be able to get some lifesaving vessels here in the community. We reached out to our state rep, Joyce Mason, and she's worked hard to provide us with funding for this to happen. And Illinois Beach State Park, the third highest tourist attraction in the state of Illinois outside of the Bean and Six Flags, so we have a lot of people coming into town now, and that is great for us. It really is. It have the tourism dollars that are coming through here, people that come in from Wisconsin to visit our community, as they see it as they're driving through, sometimes way too fast, but this morning I was at the Kiwanis Club breakfast, talking to them, and a lot of the leaders in the community there, they've recognized the work that we have done over the last ten years to put our city in position to do some great things in terms of bringing in businesses. I also have to say that Ms. Champagne, while sometimes it's hard to hear the criticisms that people might have of our city, they are welcome, because it's how we improve, and the things that you brought up this evening are things that we are working on. If we had the budget, like some of the schools, I think we could get those things a lot done much quicker, but we've had to scrape our way by here over the last ten years. For the first time in probably the last three years, we've had a, we've operated in the black, we haven't been in the red, and that's taken a lot of hard work from our department heads, our city administrator right there, and everybody working together to make sure that we have the money necessary to provide the services. And we recognize there has to be improvement, and each and every day that we all talk and sit around the table, our commissioners, our department heads, we know that we still have work to do, and we're going to continue to operate with the transparency that we're all about, and we'll have, we answer the tough questions, we're not afraid of those. We do have a plan for, I, I'll finish. We do have a plan for everything that, that we're doing. I wish we had a bigger staff, because when you look at our city clerk and my administrative assistant, we've been working on getting a deputy clerk, because everyone during the pandemic, when funds were reduced, everyone here, including me, were doing two or three jobs, and, and so we're just getting back into a position where that we can start to the problems that we deal with every day to plan in advance, instead of handling the emergencies that come at us each and every day with things that happen in our community, the unnecessary violence, that not only interrupts the peacefulness of our city, but it happens around the nation. Chief Barton and I yesterday were talking about the unfortunate events that unfolded in Colorado and in Minnesota, where people go out to a park, hundred people, five wounded and one dead at a public event, and as we're preparing for nostalgia days and giving light of what's happened in Highland Park several years ago, we have to prepare for all those possible scenarios. We've got the technology, the drones now, and our, our police force will be at these events to ensure that our residents can be safe when they're out having an event, not only in public, but when they're in their homes. So we continue to work. Our plan is not perfect, it needs tweaks, much like our comprehensive plan, but trust me, there's not an area that we look at that the city is responsible for that. We don't discuss every day about how we can get better with it, and we've made tremendous progress in the last six years, without question, not patting myself on the back. The credit goes to all these people that are here, our department heads and our commissioners, that have been committed to us having a great place to live, work, and to play. Announcements, June fourteenth, eight AM to six PM, Thirty-seventh Annual Nostalgia Days Car, Truck, and Motorcycle Show, one of the biggest events in town. People come from everywhere. Sherwood Road will be closed down, and people will be out having food and enjoying some of the classic cars that come through, and some of the new cars. So if you haven't registered, there's been a lot of information on Facebook about how to register your car to come down. If you just want to bring down your family, come down with your family and walk Sherwood Road, you'll see a lot of great cars down here. Also, on June fourteenth, later that afternoon, in the afternoon, there's a Juneteenth event down at Illinois Beach State Park. This is the second annual Juneteenth event in the City of Zion. Last year I went down after nostalgia days, and it was an incredible event, and people of all walks of life, nationalities, creeds and colors were down there enjoying Illinois Beach State Park. The music that was put on that was organized by the Juneteenth Festival was absolutely fantastic. It'll be better this year because they've had a year to plan that. June seventeenth, at six, six o'clock, there's a Zion Township Board Meeting, and at seven PM, there's a Zion City Council Meeting on June seventeenth. Those are my, I was going to say, those are my sister's birthdays, but they're in July. On June twenty-first, the library has an event, Mary Louie Event at the Library, again, is from twelve to four?
New before, and it's called Book Bash.
It's called the Book Bash. Our library has some great events going on. And then on July twenty-eighth, at Zion Benton East High School, there's a food pantry. Volunteers get there at nine o'clock, the event starts at ten and goes to about eleven thirty or so. And then on July first, we have Zion City Council Meeting from twelve, from seven o'clock, starts at seven o'clock. Excuse me, getting my notes confused, better put my glasses on. July first, seven PM Zion City Council Meeting, and then, as Director Ianson indicated, on August seventh, between eight and noon, we have our annual Zion Cleanup Day, where you can bring your electronics. our annual Zion Cleanup Day, where you can bring your electronics, tires, and things that have been in your garage for ages, and you can drop them off. We'll have a crew there that helps unload everything from your car. You have to do, show up and present your Zion's driver's license, and you can dump those items off. So that, those are all my comments for the day. Again, I always want to say this, and I, to our commissioners and our department heads, each year that I work here, I am thankful for the work that you do and the commitment you have to the city. And anytime I speak about the success that our city has, it's on your shoulders. I've inherited a great staff of people, and we organized ourselves where our communication between the departments has been better than it's ever been. So the issues that we face in our community, whether it's vacant properties, which we had meetings with some landlords to talk about a particular area of town, we work together to make sure that our city is safe and that it's clean. And again, I can't thank you enough for what you've done to help me become a better mayor each and every day, and even our residents with the suggestions that you have. I take those phone calls every day, and if there's an issue, we are going to address it. So again, I never want to leave a council meeting and not say thank you to each and every one of you for, for what you do, what you add, your insight, the questions that you ask, the things that you challenge. That's how we become better. That's how we become better, so thank you. Item number 12, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Fryerson?
Second.
Second by McDowell, and echoed by Stackhouse. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thanks, everybody, for coming out, and have a good evening.